You guys are up.
Good evening, and welcome to the Cohasset Select Board, Board of Selectmen meeting of Tuesday, August 2, 2022. It's an in-person meeting at 91 Sawyer Street, which is the Willacott Commons. It's a joint meeting with the Town of Cohasset zoning bylaw working group. We are going to open up the select board in both meetings, but as we customarily do, we start all meetings with a flag. Those who'd like to join, Paul Greedy, Fitz's status as a Marine, will lead us.
We flag the United States of America, it's a free republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
I also want to note, we have Judge Cutler from KP Law who's joined us as our special guest, doing some work for us. Roll call vote, starting with the select board.
Grabens here.
Jeanne Halliwell Dipple here.
Paul Greedy here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Jack Creighton here. Tom, why don't you call your group door?
We're calling for a meeting of the zoning bylaw committee for August 2, 2022. Alphabetical roll call, Clark.
Clark Brewer here.
Tom Callahan here, Jack.
Jack Creighton here.
David is off in Zoomland, is David here?
Not here anymore.
Okay, well, he does. And Cassie Malatesta, we don't see her on Zoom. We have a forum here, so.
Yeah, forum. All right, this meeting is in order. We're going to have some weighty matters to discuss, and so we kind of have protocol that we've been using as we move through a lot of weighty models, which is, we ask all participants to keep your comments brief and to the point. If there are disagreements, you can certainly disagree respectfully. If you've made your point, saying it two or three times doesn't necessarily make it more effective, it probably makes it less effective. And we would like to get our business done in a good manner, so get out of here in a reasonable period of time. Okay, Tom, could you, we're going to start off with a review of the zoning board proposed work plan and your calendar.
Thank you. So I created some bullet points, or we created some bullet points that we approved last night, which I don't seem to have brought with me, I thought I had, but did anybody have a copy of it quickly? I'm sorry, my bad. What I just wanted to just recap briefly where the bylaw working group, our predecessor was, it's worked up until April on various aspects of the rewrite. We pretty much come to consensus on the organization format. You know, our requests of this, of the select board is, number one, we'd like to have a full committee of seven members, we are at five at the moment, so put that out to the public to solicit additional people to join the committee as soon as possible. And I apologize that I didn't have it in front of me, I didn't print that particular document. But with respect to a timeline, you know, the committee, the bylaw working group before it was always working on an assumption of having the bylaw done by spring 2023, and I think the last time we had a joint meeting in this room, that was target date. And the committee, for the most part, in its two years, has been working on research and concerisons to other towns' bylaws on some of the issues that we know we want to address, and we're pretty much ready at this stage to get into actual bylaw writing. And we had put together a draft of some changes, some that are new and some that have been knocking around for a number of years, and we're suggesting we go forward, starting from our existing bylaw, and while at the same time, now, council, in retrospect, perhaps we should have brought in council a year ago, but for whatever reason, that didn't happen, and now council will work with us in partnership to rewrite bylaw as we go through it. When the working group kind of fell apart and we got reconstituted.
I have your timeline here.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I have the timeline. We had talked about doing this at this point, you know, we, the working group had brought forward an isolated article here and there in the last two, three town meetings. We didn't do anything in this spring, in retrospect, it's a shame we didn't do things because three steps might have been better than two, but it had been suggested to me that we do this in two steps, so I created a timeline to accomplish that, but even with an early December town meeting for the fall, it does call for a fairly aggressive schedule of meetings and review to get to a December town meeting. Now, for this first step, the focus is on reorganization, and the key to that is moving things that don't need to be in the bylaw, application materials that will change with the best practices in the state of the art, planning world, move those into regulations. We wanted to reorganize all the add-on materials, add-on articles that have been grafted onto the bylaw over the years. We have 22 articles at the moment, we're proposing a consolidation to nine, simply by moving things around into groupings. We have definitions all over the place because of different articles that have been added, consolidating those back into one spot. So we have that, and you've probably seen versions of what the new table of contents would look like, what the outline for regulations would look like, and that would be, by the way, the regulations would be a single-source compilation of all the land use board regulations, similar to what Massachusetts does with its regulations and the federal government does. And that, again, in the idea of user-friendliness, of having a one place where everything is rather than spread out all over different boards. So for the fall, for the December town meeting, would be heavy on this reorganization, and that would take many steps because a number of things have to be done, including transition, because if we're adopting a new set of definitions, for example, there are other places in the bylaw that aren't changing in the fall, that still would have to conform to the new definitions. So I think that's all doable. The suggestion in this timeline is for a few small substantive changes in the fall just because of issues that we think need immediate attention, but all the heavy lifting on any substantive changes would come in the spring town meeting. And again, we are proposing multiple articles on the theory that we may get some things, we may not get other things, let's not have the whole entire rewrite fall, all, yea or nay, all on one vote in one article. So for the major substantive changes, I can tell you there's few, if anything, that the working group had come to any conclusions on or any specific recommendations, so they would have the months between now and the, I presume it'll be a May town meeting to discuss and to do further research, but we have done a lot of research, and that's the schedule we're proposing to keep to the 2023, spring 2023 conclusion. And, you know, our view on town council is that, you know, we've had discussions with Judge Cutler and with Carolyn, I don't think we're on a different page there, maybe the way we've put together our scopes are slightly different, but the committee's work was further along into their scope, and I think, though, you know, we're on the same page of working and collaboration, they are obviously going to microanalyze everything we put forward, microanalyze in our bylaw. We have a lot of experience on the committee over the years that knows what's, some of the zoning problems with the bylaw are, or issues under the bylaw, what the community wants, but they are going to bring us a perspective from outside Cohasset that we might not necessarily have, it's going to be invaluable to us. So we're looking forward to working with them and getting going, but with the loss of time and the breakup of the working group, the way it happened, we're now at a point in early August, we've got to jump right in because essentially, articles for the fall have to be ready next month, end of next month.
Any other comments from?
It's a good summary. You know, as I've said in the past, one of the, one of the critical elements that wasn't outlined in KP Law's proposal for review was the consensus building. How do we agree on what the, what the top priorities are? And, and I think, we talked about it a little bit last night, Jack, you suggested that we put together a short list of, of priority planning issues that would be expressed through the zoning bylaws out of the master plan and anywhere else that, that where there's major stakeholders that are, have an interest in a subject that we can, we can either put together our short list and, and whittle those down, but figure out what, where they need to go in the zoning bylaw, so that the future of Cohasset has more certainty than perhaps it does now.
And we're hoping the select board will give you some guidance, Agent Diane.
Yeah, just, just a question, because the select board has been, you know, we, we look at the articles after the working group has worked on it, but to what extent are we, starting with some of the problems that we've seen that have gone before zoning board of appeals, that have been appealed, that we've been unsuccessful in court?
Chronic problems.
Those chronic kind of micro problems versus some of the bigger picture things that we all talk about in here, conversation, you know, get the calls from the community, like, why are they building a 7,000-square-foot house that is bigger than the lot, it's on, right next to my living room? So, I mean, there's that kind of macro point of view, but then, you know, where's the tree, how do we triage this, or what has been the process thus far?
All right, well, you know, Clark's new to our committee, so I'll just give you some more background. The work, the working group was originally an out, offshoot of the master plan committee, so we were operating from the master plan's priorities, but we also had Woody as a member, 30 years' experience on the zoning board, myself with 30 years in different boards here and there, but we, again, it's, I suppose, the answer to your question, Diane, is how do we approach this? In splitting it into two, there is a reorganization and housekeeping part that has to be done, that just hasn't been done in so long. And in doing it in a two-step approach and trying to think logically how we do, we do this, and given the short timeframe between now and fall town meeting, my thought was we do that first. However, there would be some initiatives in that. Number one, cleaning up our definitions, consolidating in one place, getting rid of what we don't need, maybe bringing in some new definitions. There are some definitions such as how we define height on a sloped roof that we are changing on the boards as a matter of policy, but it's not a change in the bylaw yet. There are some other definitions we have to play with that have been problematic. The use table, we are proposing as part of a reorganization of dealing with and simplifying it, and that's an answer, the classic example that Woody has always given is that there is a certain dog-related business on 3A that despite the laundry list of uses we have, it fell through the cracks and was prohibited, and that person had to go to land court. So the approach at the moment, which the bylaw committee had yet to get into in any detail, is to simplify that list into broad categories under the general theory that Cohasset needs to be flexible and attract in commercial development because we need it, we're not near the highway, we have the ocean on one side of us, we have a lot of impediments to having commercial growth, but it's, it's a benefit for us fiscally to have a commercial tax base, but we won't press 6. something or 7% of our tax base is commercial. We're not going to, we're not going to double that, but we at least need to not discourage commercial growth. And we took a step by bringing back the use variance to town meetings ago, and that, that gives the zoning board a lot of flexibility that was missing for 20 years, so.
Is it fair to say this is an example where you've learned from existing problems?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
To Diane's point.
Right, and I'll tell you that in the fall, last fall, we toyed with the idea of the single-lot exemption under our non-conforming section of the bylaw, because it is a problem, and we are a complete outlier on what our law says about that, and it has bitten us in court in the sense that a house.
Tom, explain what the single lodge.
All right, well, the single-lot exemption is, it's a certain rule that allows for grandfathering of a property when zoning, certain zoning things, frontage, what is it, lot size, frontage, a couple of other things that, when they're changed, it allows for grandfathering for a lot of a certain size that meets certain criteria to be developed. Under state law, there is a time limit on being able to exercise that right if you qualify. We have basically thrown out the time limit of what's called the merger doctrine, and it's allowed some houses to be built. And the most recent example is the zoning board had to grant permission for this house, neighbors appealed, neighbors lost in land court. We researched that, we had people show-up meetings giving examples, we had a developer who's very knowledgeable about zoning law tell us about a SJC case that says, even if we repeal it, there's still some issues where it might survive. But we started to debate that, and that, when we get to substantive things in the spring, that might be a high priority.
But just to, just to add to that, I don't think there's any reason why we have to stop the aspirational and problem zoning-related issues investigation as a committee. We can work in parallel track with, you know, the cleaning up and organization as well as the aspirational goals, because I really think we're going to need to get collective input from stakeholders on what's, what are the top 10 priorities, what are the top 10 problems to solve, we think, in, as a, as a consequence of the zoning bylaw, and then what are the top 10 aspirational things that we have? You know, in the past, we've, we aspired to, to prop up the village from a zoning perspective, to, to create a downtown vitality, to create a market, because we saw it as, as stock. It's like you really, from a zoning perspective, the village, before we passed the village bylaw, you couldn't really do anything. Whatever was there was there, and that was it. So those are the kind of aspirational things. Tom's also made some suggestions about, that are aspirational, about 3A and commercial development in terms of overlay districts, but I still think we're going to have to put together our short list of both problems and aspirational things, and see how other towns manage those, along with council, and, and find best practices so that we can start working with stakeholders to, to establish the priorities.
And under this, let me just say, under this timeline, we're proposing, like, all of these substantive changes might happen all in one town meeting. We might take a list of priorities and say, some of these substantive changes, spring '23, some fall '23. So again, it depends on what approach you want to follow, the reorganization is, if that's any part, it's just moving.
I've got a question. I've heard this word a couple of times in this conversation, major stakeholders, to whom were you referring when you say major stakeholders? I'm just curious.
Well, I mean, I think, yeah, first, it's the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board, this is our zoning bylaw committee, probably advisory, and the zoning board of appeals, as, as sort of municipal stakeholders, along with our planning director, and those are the kind of first, first line of stakeholders, but we're, while we're planning public outreach, then, that's sort of like the next, the next level. Once we've articulated and have, have draft zoning bylaws, as well as the problems and what are aspirational things, then we start working on those together, I think. And again, building consensus, I said that twice, I'm sorry, Jack, you said.
Well, to me. That's all right, that's all right, we'll take your star off.
The town, the residents of this town.
What is the town?
All the residents, people that live here, those are the major stakeholders, as far as I'm concerned, all right, that's my opinion.
It's always.
So when you bring that up.
Yeah, no, it's always been the working group.
I want to see what you guys are thinking about doing for outreach, and we have the new website coming up, no, it's semi-finished.
Yeah, that's fair.
And so it'd be, I think it'd be a who of all of us, you know, to be getting their opinion, their input. Again, you brought up the single-lot exemption, you know, input, so they're aware of the process all the way through.
Surveys can help too, they really can.
Surveys, again, and we have the new website coming up, input's going to be welcome. I would suggest maybe getting it out there and having the people that are interested in getting involved, working with you through the process.
Correct, and the working group had always, from day one, planned a program of public outreach. We went to solicit a consultant to help us with that, got one response that was really non-responsive, so, you know, at the moment, or going forward, we're doing it now, listen, we have the capability. And on this timeline, that would start in two weeks, because unfortunately, with the timeline, setting up a public forum in August is not ideal, but to get that public input in a setting that is not, you know, town meeting, we come here, here's the, here's what we're proposing, it's a fait accompli, yes or no. We don't want to just do it at that stage, we've always planned public forums, so we get feedback, we get suggestions. Anybody who's reading Cohasset 143 knows that the public is saying, oh, the bylaw's this, the bylaw's that, it's not doing this, you know, those people need to be heard from. And then we have a formal process with the planning board for public hearings before town meeting. We've talked to Justin, you know, there's already material on the reorganization up on the new zoning bylaw committee page, the website. We've talked about doing outreach through the town's Facebook page. I think we'll respond to 143, it's not an official town page, we'll respond to that situationally, but, you know, that was always part of the plan, and we intend to do that.
So Chris, when are we supposed to be up and running?
I think we're looking for early September, about March.
Early September. So, you know, I mean, I'm not saying that you're not doing it, but it's, it looks like it's going to be a heck of a page, and.
Well, it's already there.
Proactive, and, you know, I would maybe launch, all I'm saying is, you know, the process from the get-go, inclusion, I'm not saying you haven't done it, by the way, every tool that we have at our disposal, we should use to invite the public's response.
Always been the answer.
And I want to, I mean, just.
Yeah, I was going to ask.
Paul, thank you. Basically, while we were talking about stakeholders, stakeholders really are the landowners, people that live in this town. I think what we learned from, you know, fall town meeting, when we had the private ways bylaw change, was that we really hadn't engaged the people that lived on private ways, and we hadn't engaged those stakeholders. One of the worries that was, that evolved from town meeting was, what does this mean for my road? We hadn't answered that question. So, you know, to your point about engaging, it's not just committees, it's the people that live and own property here that need to be engaged proactively, really.
Yeah.
Jane, you have?
Yeah, Diane can go.
Oh, Diane, okay.
I mean, just a couple of questions. I mean, I agree, I mean, I think that was where, I think we need to do more than put stuff on a webpage, like, we literally almost have to pied piper this because we saw the pushback that we got at town meeting, special town meeting. And I think this begs the question, and I have no opinion on this, but I'm just throwing it out there, politically speaking, we want this to succeed, and I think we need to talk very seriously about bifurcating the process. If we're going to bring something to special, you know, what do we bring? Do we only bring kind of the administrative reorg stuff? And do the, the sort of bigger meteor that's actually going to change how you might, you know, apply for a permit to do something later? Like, what is the right way to help walk the community of residents through what we're suggesting and getting us to guess, basically, in town meeting? Because there, I don't think there's anybody in town that doesn't think we need to do this, whatever this is, this big readdressing of our, of our zoning bylaws. The question is, how do we get to a point where we've given people enough opportunity to understand the meteor pieces of this? Are you going to blow, you know, what are you saying, I can't put a swimming pool in if, you know, because I'm going to disturb ledge, like, so that we're, we're not putting anything like that in front of them until it's ready to succeed?
Yeah, and the first public forum would have explained that if we were adopting this timeline or something close to it. And, you know, again, in looking at how to do it at two steps, you know, a change in one place begets changes out in places, and certainly just doing the reorg, which would include retooling the definitions, is going to, there's going to have to be a transitional article. We talked at our meeting is that Cohasset E360, our vendor that puts the bylaw on the webpage, they can't even get one article change up for months. So we are going to have to have an interim PDF version of it available to the public at all times and to the boards.
Temporary, and, and we also need to push back on the provider.
Yeah, no.
To see if they can.
Jane was kind of.
Yeah, but so we, the plan is to really just do reorg, I mean, granted, the timeline throws in a couple of little substantive things that we think need to be addressed sooner rather than later, but they can certainly wait to the spring if they had to, and simply just move pieces around and reorganize.
So thank you, Tom. I know you've done a huge amount of work, and it really shows in all the information you've provided, as well as you, Lauren, you more lightly, because I don't, and Clark, who I served on the planning board, what, almost a decade ago?
Seems like yesterday.
So I just wanted to provide you with some of my high-level thoughts in terms of substantively what I think we should change, which I think is very aligned with what you've proposed, but I think it helps to maybe reaffirm this publicly. And so I think when I sort of go through the list, I've got, you know, a quick list that I think reflects what I'm hearing, and I'm trying to translate what I'm hearing throughout town into these changes. And so I do think it's the frontage, I think we have to really appreciate and understand that we're out of sync with a lot of towns. Yeah, I think it's the height, I think that, you know, we're at the far end of the height of buildings in this whole shore, and it's reflected when you look at our buildings. That's particularly true when you look at where you measure to. I think, for example, the change from measuring from the base flood elevation in the harbor is going to be something that's incredibly important, and we're going to see the results of what happens when that doesn't happen soon. I think we need to look at setbacks. You know, there's all, I've, I've seen when I was on the board that, you know, a lot of the friction comes when people are feeling like they're being wedged next to new developments, and we may end up not changing it, but I think it's worthwhile to take a look at that. We have inconsistencies throughout our bylaws between, for example, 3A, the setbacks when you, you get when you're buffered up against a commercial zone on 3A as compared to the village, and I'm going to get to that in terms of the village specifically. I think we also need to look at home sizes and massing, I know that's a huge issue, it may be controversial, but that is a pain point within town when you look at the numbers you all have presented in terms of the average home sizes really, really increasing. I think the related issue that people are going to start to appreciate when we start hitting crisis seas is that the capacity of carrying a lot of the development, whether it's our roads being ripped up, our sewer capacity, our electrical grid capacity, is really being pushed to the limit because of the collective increased massing and carrying capacity of Cohasset. The exemption, I think we have to try for that. I would, I would rather try and fail than not attempt it. Mitigation, and this is, this is new, and I think this is where having legal counsel really weigh in is very important. On the mitigation front, I think that we need to look and see if there's any bylaws, including those that towns are adopting, to really set forth a mitigation formula. I think that we have not done a good job in Cohasset in negotiating mitigation payments in part because it's not part of the culture of Cohasset, and it should be.
Do you think residential and commercial mitigation? Because they both have impacts.
Yeah, I think so. I think, I think we should, you know, look at all the different options that we have, because the reality is the taxpayers are going to pay for this ultimate cumulative effect, and the question is, who do we want to pay? On the, moving to the next bullet point, I have accessory dwelling. I think, you know, there, and Tom, you and I have talked about, we already allow for accessory dwellings, but is there a way potentially to provide some flexibility? You know, part of the issue may be sewer capacity in terms of why people aren't building, but I do think as our population ages, land continues to be pretty pricey, and there's housing demand, including for more affordable housing. I think trying to figure out, and not necessarily 40B housing, but ways that people can afford to stay in Cohasset through some form of accessory dwellings, I think is a worthwhile conversation, even if ultimately the bylaw remains the same. I like the idea of trying for a historic district, I think that alone is a heavy lift, but Cohasset is one of the few historic, really truly historic towns in the United States, and we should preserve it. truly historic towns in the United States, and we should preserve it. When we get to the village, I think there, we need to look at parking. I think our parking requirements have unfortunately been too successful to the point where now we simply are gonna face a lot of parking issues if we continue to develop at the pace we have been in terms of just parking for, you know, the retail businesses that are down there. We already have merchants coming to the select board in different capacities saying, there's no parking, you need to help us. And so, that's something that I think we need to consider. Fringe, so this goes to the setback issue. I liked Lauren's idea of the fringe district. I thought that was a great idea, and I appreciate that it looks like that may be on the table. And I'd like to think about whether we can do something more stringent on the design side. I do think that there's some room there. I actually was taking a look at the comments on 143. You and Tom were going back and forth with someone, and I went and looked at the town's design bylaw guidelines up in the name. And they do have design, design bylaws. So, I think, you know, this is a wish list if we can have lots of people on the committee. The harbor, I touched upon that. Height, resiliency bylaws, more parking restrictions, because I think parking is gonna be a super tight issue down there. And I just alluded to it, the resiliency bylaw. I think this is something that's gonna get more tricky in the future. And this is something we're dealing with, the select board's dealing with more generally in terms of how we navigate resiliency. And so, I think that's something that we should at least think about. And then the last on the communications plan, I agree with my colleagues in terms of outreach. You know, one thing that maybe is a way to span the gap and, and I'm just gonna throw it out there for consideration is, on the timing, what, and I've, I've talked about this in the past, I would really like a notice and comment process, which is what we do at the Fed. We do it on the state level as well in terms of putting the regulations, proposed regulations out there for a long time. If we can put proposals out there that may also put in place, even if we're gonna go through a very, very lengthy notice process, it may address some of your concerns, Tom, if we put a proposal out, let's say, you know, in December or January for a spring town meeting to address the concerns about development potentially in the interim. I think it may be worthwhile to see how long we can have a proposed bylaw sitting out there, including if we're gonna tweak it as we go, but to get the benefit of that hold on the bylaw as we continue to enhance it and improve it as we go. So, that's one option that came to mind. And again, I don't know the timing restrictions and flex we have.
Surprisingly, your list has been discussed in one form or another by the working group over the last two years. Not, on the table of area regulations, which is the key thing, all the dimensions, which truly hasn't been touched in any substance since 1986, when we redid lot sizes in the residential districts and some other things. We have talked about frontage, we've talked about height, specifically in the harbor. I will say with the 35 feet overall, yes, we're on the high end. Towns range from 30 feet to 35 feet. 32 seems to be an average, but we're at 35. What is the killer for us is the definition with a peak roof. That should change, the proposal should change. I don't, we haven't discussed, though, that 35 feet by itself is a problem. We've discussed, we haven't discussed setbacks too much, other than this new idea of having a setback or a fringe thing where the village and the residential districts meet, or then the harbor and residential districts meet. And house size has been a big issue every time we have a large home review, which Clark and I were instrumental in getting passed out of the 2004 master plan. It was originally supposed to be proposed as a special permit process. It's, my derogative term of it over the years has been, it's a coffee clutch. But it's now getting to the point where we have real hostility between neighbors and developers, and it's essentially inside baseball of zoning, it's a site plan review, and there's not a lot of substance we can do. It's really not a yes or no process. So, I have thrown one idea about how to deal with that out there. But, you know, I'm also advocating, as one of its offices 17 years ago, to get rid of it in its current form. But we touched on all of these things. And as far as getting feedback, again, we, we have to be on a certain timeline for zoning articles to get to town. Obviously, things get out there, and there's no way things won't get out there. Might see applications for zoning freezes. We've got one pending at the moment. We may see others, and the horse will be out of the barn. Not much we can do about that.
Well, what we're really looking to do here, and thank you, Jane, that was a very, very comprehensive list of a number of issues that I think everybody at this table, we all kind of know what they are, and that was a very good succinct. And it's these things that, you know, in the zoning bylaw, has been discussed for, for two years. And what we're doing, Tom, is we want you to hear from the select board and we are, and through us from the town as to the issue. So, we're giving you all these issues, but I do see...
Surprisingly the same.
They are surprisingly the same, and they really all come down to carrying capacity. Cohasset has exceeded its natural carrying capacity if we want the town to remain the same type of town that it is. If we want the town to be densely populated like downtown Marblehead, that's fine. But I think we're all hearing that we don't want that. So, this comes down to carrying capacity. And I think that what we wanted to do as a, as a select board is to give you, you know, zoning bylaws, basically encouragement that you're on the same track because what Jane just laid out, and I'm sure Cory and Paul agree, and Diane I know agrees, these are, these are the issues. But I think it's important that as a select board, because mind you, we pulled you out of, you know, master plan. You're not a subset of master plan. You are a direct committee directly reporting to the select board, and that's why it was reconstituted. And that was a signal to you that you have, that this is a real necessity for the town and that we are behind you and we're giving you... I circulated to the board a couple of days ago just an idea to come up with a list of things that are important. And so, we're here to give you those ideas. And then we want to hear town council because, you know, one of the first things that we, that we did in the spring when we reorganized is we instructed town council, we gave them the authority to move forward to providing legal expertise because it was needed for the zoning bylaws, and they've done a very good job. And we've got, I, I hope people at home recognize the power of our law firm. These are the top people in the Commonwealth, and we're very grateful to have you, by the way. But before, and I think we should move on to hearing the legal comments, but I would wanna go to the, of the select board, if there's any element that you think has not been, and then I'd last again from the zoning bylaw, is there any final comments? Cory?
Yeah, I mean, so the first thing is, I just, there's a lot of things that the select board hasn't voted on, so I just, I'm not quite sure, you know, we're at the point where the select board has an opinion on these things yet?
No, they're not. I'm just asking for people to give out...
No, I'm gonna give feedback, but you alluded to the fact that the select board felt a certain way, which I want to be clear.
There has been no vote.
So, and I do wanna have a gut check here, which is, you know, all that we are in this capacity is advisory. We have no legal authority to make any changes. We can bring something to town meeting, but town meeting will decide. Last time we tried this, you know, there were three proposed things, one got dropped, and then we batted one out of two. And the one we lost on was, I mean, in some ways embarrassing. And I personally don't think we should set ourselves up for another failure. Because if we fail again, the town's not gonna trust us anymore. And all the work that is important and needs to be done is gonna get pushed off for five, 10 years, a generation. We can't do that again. So, you know, I think there are a lot of things we can talk about. We all have a wish list, but ultimately, it's not up to us, it's up to town meeting. And I think we have to focus on what's the problem, be really clear about the message, and get widespread support because this is, this is gonna affect people's land rights, it's gonna affect their land valuations, it's gonna affect, you know, land that's been passed through generations. This is gonna have an impact on people. And if we go through and people distrust us again, the horse will be out of the barn forever. And it's gonna prevent us from even doing, I think, Tom, I think one thing that we really need to be clear about, and you alluded to it, is that there are really two conversations here, and we have to be good about not mixing them. There's the reorganization, which we're trying to be as, you know, policy neutral as possible. And then there's the substantive changes. If people don't trust us, we're not gonna be able to do the first thing either. So, from where I'm standing, I want to support something that I know people can trust, can understand, and that we can go to town meeting and get that feedback from the ultimate decision-makers, the people of this town, that we've done a good job. I don't want to sit there and say, well, here's some ideas, what do you guys think? I don't think that's productive.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Cory. Paul, do you have...
I agree with Cory in how it's presented. Another thing I, well, first off, I wanna talk a little bit more on mitigation. I guess that will step in with legal department or anything else. But how it's presented and... Hold the microphone. But I will say this, the horse is already out of the barn. And that presented itself quite clearly at the last town meeting. That was kind of a sideshow. And presentation, Tom, and how it's laid out and explained to the town, the benefits, draws, you get the feedback prior to coming in. I agree. I mean, I think that the last time meeting was somewhat of a setup, and I'm perfectly blunt in saying that, because I don't know, it's dry. And I wasn't too pleased with that. So, I think that, me personally, because I sat at the meeting, but that's just me.
Can I just, can I just interject about the fall? I'd rather not, I have my own issues would have happened in December, but I don't think we should dwell, I mean...
Not dwelling, I'm saying...
Too much, you know?
Not dwelling at all.
We all learned our lessons from it, believe me.
I think, I think...
Pity certainly did and was prepared...
It's counterproductive for what we're trying to do.
I know, but I know what you're saying.
No one's dwelling.
I know what you're saying, that, Paul.
All right. What I'm saying is how it's presented, case point, point to point, the benefits. Let the town offer input. You're gonna get the feedback from the negatives, you're gonna get feedback from the positives. How do we spin that in a correct form and fashion that the town will look to move ahead in whichever way they do? I don't believe that there's any embarrassment involved. I just think that, again, I think it's all gonna be a presentation, inclusion, and consensus. So, you go as armed to that meeting as the voices against it. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Just to piggyback on, I think Paul's key message is communications, and I think
that one of the mistakes we make, and I'm gonna show my immaturity, but it's like a Scooby Doo episode, it's like us and then the developers. Well, the developers in probably 90% of these situations are our neighbors. It's somebody that wants to put a driveway, you know, at a different section of their yard, or wants to put an addition on, or wants to blow out their roof and put a full dormer. It's not, and we don't have enough land for some outside person, and we do in some cases, but for the most part, these are residents. So, to, to set this up like, you know, the developers are trying to do this and then everybody gets mad, it's really just other residents are trying to maximize, as any one of us would, our property. And we have to know that, and we have to understand that to the extent that we include those people in all of our communications and all of our brainstorming, we're gonna get a better result on the end. It's just to ignore them or set, set it up as an us and them is really a big mistake.
Thanks, Diane. Jane?
Yeah, I completely agree with that, and that's why I think a very robust notice and comment, including through an outreach process that Justin helped us with, is extremely important. So, that way, we, we can hear, we can hear from people if they say, for example, like, no, don't change the setbacks, I really wanna drive, I, you know, I wanna do XYZ. And the overwhelming, that's what you use these processes for, including through electronic outreach, to get a sense of what is the, you know, representative will of the residents. And I think there's ways to do it to ensure that it truly is representative, including through outbound communications like mailings, et cetera. But what I wanna be clear about is, and this is, this is my lesson learned, is that the select board needs to support this committee, not only in the communications, but learning and understanding the substance so we can do the outreach on our own to educate, know the issues, be able to talk intelligently about them, have that back and forth with various residents, have this iterative communication process among the key stakeholders. And, and I think it is important that we not just say, well, this is your committee recommendation, and, you know, we'll just let it hang out there and go from there. I think we need to be really involved, including in, in that sort of back and forth that one would expect from being the elected executives of the town. And so, I do think that that's why we're having this meeting. So, we can reaffirm that we, the select board, have reviewed what you're presenting, you've given us information. If we have feedback, we wanna go back and forth, let's tell you now, you shouldn't be doing things. And then nine months later, it's like, whoa, wait a second, what are you doing? Like, let's have that substantive dialogue, and we might have disagreements, and we should air those out. Because if at a top level, if we can't agree that, you know, we have, quote, "a problem we're trying to fix" or "goal we're trying to reach," then we should have that on the table from the start, because otherwise, we're wasting your time. And so, we don't wanna do that either.
It's important to respect everyone's time in these, in these efforts. And I think you've hit on a really important concept. You don't wanna have something on the table that half the people that are on it are like, no way, come on.
There's a reason why we're having this meeting, the reason why one of the first things the select board did was engage council, the reason why we have Justin over here on communications. These are all select board initiatives that have happened by other select boards, but we've centralized them because we do wanna make sure we move forward. We do wanna make sure that the community is knowledgeable. Justin, come on, stand. We do want to make sure that there's an effective way to communicate, and we do wanna listen to everybody, and we do wanna give you guidance, which is why we have this meeting. And speaking of council, I think we, unless somebody has, oh, Lauren, of course, Lauren.
Thank you.
My, my apologies.
All right. I just, I have two fundamental questions really for the board, and that's in terms of logistics and next steps. You know, I'm always talking about process because it sounds to me that you've all sort of agreed on the initiative and moving forward. We just need to know exactly how so, because you have two sort of main questions in front of you. One is, what is the scope of work and who are the roles as to who's doing what? You have one option where Tom has already created a draft document and is ready to move forward in a timeline as it's laid out here. You also have a scope before you, but from KP Law where they would do the writing and the initiative, you know, the process begins differently. And then in addition, I need a confirmation on timeline. Tom's staring daggers into me right now because he wanted to gloss over that button.
Well, we, you know, we are very...
But I need those questions answered.
I know that, there's...
Because I need, next...
Well, Lauren, you gotta do both the timelines at the same time. It's easy, right? Anyway, that's why we're here. And, and let's turn it over to our council.
I think that was a really good segue, Lauren, so thanks for that setup. So, first of all, thanks for having us in, because I think this is a very useful discussion for us as well. And I think I tried to introduce Judge Cutler to everyone as, as we were filing in, but if I didn't, you know, we, I am privileged to have somebody as a colleague who is the former chief justice of the land court and somebody that I often go to. I don't necessarily say it's to discuss Cohasset, but after about 10 minutes, you know, she usually identifies what town I'm talking about. And we've had some great conversations about sometimes dealing with what seems to be like a wet ball of spaghetti and how do you start to unravel this and deal with some of the issues here. So, so I wanna back up a little bit about our proposal that we put together, just because I had had, you know, some conversations with Lauren at one point, I think shortly after the election. I happened to be in town hall one day, and Lauren had mentioned how they must have been surfing the web and came across a diagnostic tool that Judge... surfing the web and came across a diagnostic tool that Judge Cutler had actually done for another town, looking at their zoning bylaws, and that that seemed to be something that the town might be interested in. There were then further conversations with Tom Callahan, as he seemed to be, you know, one of the last men standing as the zoning bylaw working group dissolved, and he was still there. And then, of course, some conversations with your town manager about, well, you know, there's more than one way to approach a zoning bylaw project. And I'm not going to say that any one way is the right way versus the wrong way, but we've got to decide what, what is the path forward. Our proposal, we gave you what our typical approach would be, that we look at four phases. There's the audit phase, where there's a lot of meeting with the stakeholders, sitting down with folks. And one person that I didn't hear mentioned earlier as a stakeholder is, you know, your building commissioner, too. You know, who is, who's, who's on the front line every day or dealing with, what are your biggest issues? What are your biggest challenges? Doing that public outreach as well, talking to developers, too. Because, you're right, you don't want to go into another town meeting and have, I've seen it happen, where a developer just completely throws a grenade into the works, and that's the end of it. You want to bring as many people under the tent as you can, which usually involves an awful lot of outreach at the, at the early stages. Then we'd start to, you know, then there's like, you know, like I said, this diagnostic tool, where, you know, at a minimum, we would look at the bylaw and make suggestions and say, okay, this is no longer consistent with state law, the SJC rules, you can't do this anymore. Section 2 here is inconsistent with section 5 there. Or even just a couple of my own observations, sitting through your zoning board and planning board meetings for not quite the last year, things that have popped up where, you know, we suddenly discovered, for example, you don't have a parking category for standalone restaurants. How could that be? I don't, I don't know, but, you know, let's fix that. Height has certainly come up periodically. The common driveways have been a common theme, too. Definitions that are just, you know, I sit there at our meetings, and I flip through the bylaw, and immediately I go looking for a definition section, realize there is no definition of that term. So, so those are just some, you know, basic things that we could identify and clean up. And I think that is, as Tom talks about, sort of, you know, you break it down between reorganization and then substantive to follow later, if that's the way you decide to approach it, those are things that could be done. Now, then we go into, obviously, drafting and the town meeting phase. Now, the one thing that is a little unusual here, I have, I have never walked into, and I don't think Judge Cutler has either, we've never really walked into the process sort of like at the midway point. Two years into it, and whatever the prior committee's priorities might have been, I don't know if the current committee, you know, carries forward those same priorities. But we have a member who has rewritten the zoning bylaw. And that's wonderful, commendable, and God bless you, Tom. But is it reflective of where the larger group wants to go? Does it, does it reflect the priorities? And I'm not saying it doesn't. I haven't, I haven't gone through any past, you know, Article 1, so I can't even comment substantively, but, but that is a little unusual for us to come in and say, don't worry about the priorities, we know what the priorities are, don't worry about the public outreach or the meeting with the stakeholders, we've already done that, read the master plan, which we've both been doing, and, okay, try to then, then here's, here's draft of, you know, a revised Article 1, start here. Is that really where you want to begin the process?
Could I clarify a little?
Sure.
I've been on the zoning bylaw since we started it. So there's that continuity. And, and what was, what we saw early-
You're right. I apologize, Tom was not the only last man standing, apologize.
Right. And I jumped up and got out of Dodge, but anyway. But the, the overall thrust is generally, if you talk to people in this town, there's an overall general, generalized agreement. There'll be differences here and there. And we all kind of know what it is, and what we're doing, part of this meeting is to bring that out, so there's clarity, so you can hear that clarity, so you know that these, these are generally widely shared values and across the town. Now, obviously, somebody owns a piece of land here, or a developer there, or somebody wants to put a pool here, would vehemently disagree. But, you know, overall, we want to do that. What we ran into when, when we had these, the sense of where we wanted to go, if we put this out to bid, and we didn't get, because we're a small town, we got either bids that were appropriate for City of Austin, or Brockton, or Brookline, but not for a small coastal community that has environmental challenges and land challenges. So we decided we're going to have to do something. And so Tom has put together kind of a synthesis of many of the things. So that's why it's a little bit different from what we normally say. But, you know, as I look at what you're proposing, these are very common sense. This is, obviously, you have to look at what it is, you have to go through that code. There are chapters that conflict with other chapters, there are no definitions, there's no consistency. And those are some of the things in our RFQ that we had asked for. And nobody really wanted to do that, because it, it really, it was difficult. They had either huge things, which were inappropriate for a town, whatever, that's water over the dam. But Tom's is a distillation of a lot of years of thought, so, and I think you're hearing, especially in Jean summarized it very, very nicely, of the overall thing. So that, I think, as you move forward, you can, you can have some assurance that that does represent some degree of as much of a common agreement as you're ever going to get.
And even just to that point, if, first, if we're going to bifurcate this as suggested and start with reorganization, then respectfully, I don't think we just start with Article 1. I think we kind of go to that diagnostic tool and figure out what needs to be. I mean, yes, we can all agree the definition should all be in a central location. But doing that, that review, some of which, like I said, may already have been done, but, you know, it's also got to be a document that we're comfortable with for town meetings. I don't think the idea is to reorganize by just a few articles. I think you're going to do like a housekeeping and reorganization, reformatting kind of approach as your first pass at this. It pretty much goes to town meeting is a wholesale document in that format. And then there's the second wave with, with the substantive changes.
Right. What we are thinking is this, and first of all, it's not cast in stone, or bronze, or whatever you call it, how we're going to go forward, that's why we're having this meeting, okay? Because I'm very well aware, one of the challenges in bifurcating, or one of the reasons, is there are certain elements, and Tom will tell you exactly what they are, which are like, the barn doors are open, the horses are getting out. Are there some things that we can in an interim manner say, all right, this is kind of an egregious threat to the nature of Cohasset? Is it possible, in a coherent legal way, to close some of those doors as we work on the rest of the code? And that really is a, is a professional question that, that we would address. And the, and understanding the purpose for the bifurcation helps you guide us to where we want to go. And the purpose is, where the doors are open, is there a mechanism to close those doors while we finish the rest of the job?
Just a-
Now, Tom, go ahead.
A couple of things. So, again, I'll repeat that we should have probably had you involved a year ago, but we didn't. Part of writing the bylaw is that Cohasset is notorious for studying things to death and not getting to substance. And we should have started public forums a year ago, but we really spent the last two years on research. And then without town council, somebody had to get it started. And I, it has been the working group's point of view, and certainly mine, that this has to be initiated by us in the town. No disrespect to anybody else, but if you don't live here, you're not attuned to all the issues. You know the state law, and know where our bylaw stinks with respect to state law. But, for example, the bid we got from the one company, the zoning expert was from Minnesota, and I said, all due respect, you don't know nothing about Massachusetts, much less Cohasset. And that's, so the initiative for this needs to come from us, and the working group, the way it was constituted at the beginning, had the in-house talent to do that. And we had, you know, other gentlemen who had far more experience on town boards and worked with the bylaw. And so we kind of recognized our problems, but, you know, with respect to your scope, I, and I told you this, I expect you to rip parts of things and change and amend and tell me where in state law it's inconsistent, tell me what something else is going on in another town and best practices. I expect that. But, you know, it was presented to try to do this in two phases. The reorganization is simply, yes, Articles 1 through 4, because I think they just have to fit into a reorganization, but it can be as simple as just moving the existing parts around into new chapters, and that's really all it is. But, you know, but the other consideration there was, can this town swallow the whole bylaw all at once? It apparently did it in 1955, and I'll remind everybody, it was at a special town meeting. And can we do that again? I don't know how they did it in '86, the other previous super major change was in '69. I don't know how they did it then. They didn't do the whole bylaw, they did significant portions. However we approach this, it's going to still have to be in multiple steps, because it shouldn't be just one article, bylaw up, bylaw down. It's going to need to be pieces.
Jeff?
Yeah.
So I think we're sort of talking two tracks at once, all right? You've got some very large policy issues, and you're trying to address those on one hand, and then you've got the housekeeping detail. And I think, I think maybe if you split it in half, and as Carolyn suggested, you bring to town meeting a package of literally housekeeping, so that you can stand there and say, we have not changed any substantive things except 1, 2, and 3, and they're in Articles 6 and 7, and we'll go through those with you, exactly what has changed from what we do now. What you're really seeing here is a reformatting, a re, perhaps some clarification language to make something clearer to the users. We thought it said something, but as we look at it, as the building inspector uses it, as the planning board uses it, they're finding out people are disagreeing on what it means. So we have gone back to the substance, we have talked to the various people involved, and this is what we believe it has always meant to be, and this is clear for everyone to know. We have corrected any inconsistencies with state law, and we call those out, each one of them, and say, so, we're asking you to adopt this recodified, and that's, I think that's the key. It's not a re, it's not a revised, you know, it's recodified, and that's a very simple process by law. And, by the way, we expect to be coming back using this as our base, and we are coming back with some pretty significant changes that, in the meantime, we have been holding public forums, we are dealing with the policy and substantive changes that we want to see. We will be coming back, maybe not all at the next town meeting, but certainly in the very near future, with a series of these that we have determined are the, are the, are the policy directives of the town, these are the goals that most people want to see, and what we're trying to do is come up with a way to achieve those goals. That's where you have publishing bullet, and not necessarily the bylaw, the way it's going to read, but here's what this new section would do, here's what this change we're talking about might do. Now, there's, the risk of that, of course, is as you're talking about these things, I think it was mentioned, Tom mentioned, people come in with their freeze plans, and then, you know, there's a lot of people who aren't, who aren't going to be subject to those things. So you have to sort of figure out, you know, what the, what the unintended consequences are, because no matter what, no matter what you change, there will be unintended consequences.
Of course.
You know?
There's a buzzword in this town, is that, right? So we all, we all flinch a little bit.
Clark will tell you, we discussed this even tonight, that it was a former planning board member, that was his favorite phrase, and I can't stand it because it has stopped so much, it has stopped so much change in this town, but-
But it is important, but thorough vetting upfront and having a transparent process where we're getting as much input as possible from as many stakeholders. And, and I think the residents are the priority stakeholders, but there, there are other developers, town manager, town planner, they aren't residents, but they're still stakeholders in getting the, the right thing figured out for, for the town of Cohasset's future.
So I guess what I was going to say is, I see, and maybe I'm incorrect here, because I haven't seen the charge for the committee, I see the committee as that larger policy piece, that larger change, I guess, leader, if you will, while, you know, we can be doing the real basics that the committee then reviews, but also, and I just want to add this other thing, the planning board is a key, key player here. The planning board is the board that is going to have to bring that report to town meeting, hold the public hearings, be able to answer questions. The planning board has to be involved directly, or we lose it.
Where the, where the planning board?
We're the two-
And you're the two-
Plus a few others.
Right.
Better than the planning board.
I don't think we're at cross purposes here.
No, I don't think so.
And then again, I, I'm, I'm been very cautious and wary, and I made this known to everybody, that I don't want the work of the committee of the last two years to just be ignored or tossed out the door. But you can do it a different way, but Articles 1 through 9 proposed for the fall is a simple reorganization, it's a simple thing you just said to do. Whether we throw in other stuff is up to us, but, and I think we can do that, and the messaging you was perfect of how we explain that to people, and I, we're not at cross purposes of that. As far as the planning board goes, I have, over the last two years, tried to update them. It's at the end of meetings, everybody's tired, sometimes the attention spans aren't great. We hashed it out with each other the other night for a good 45 minutes. Now is two of us on the board to actively participate. We intend to update them, but at the same time, you can guide me otherwise, but I don't want to necessarily prejudice them in their hearing process that's coming up, which would, in this timeline, be slated for October. But they've been informed along the way, it's just, you know, it's, I've told them they have to be interested and ask questions and want to listen to it, but-
But the policy stuff that she's talking about, the policy stuff is important to have the planning board on board.
Oh, yeah, no, we have to do, but, and that needs a longer process, the first spring town meeting, absolutely.
Dana, then Diane.
So just to step back, is the decision point before us, whether to take the reorganized red line that Tom et al. have done, Articles 1 through 9, and ask you to review and opine on the reorganization to start, or to have you take sort of a fresh look at the existing bylaws and do essentially, I don't want to say double-blind research, but something akin to that in terms of looking through that, and you may come to the same conclusion where Tom is at, you may not, and then we'll have, you know, Tom's version, and then your version, and, you know, we can, we can think through it.
Is that, is that sort of where we're at? I don't think we need competing versions, that just confuses people more. That just confuses people more. And one of the, and I can say this, and I don't mean it as a criticism. I see where you're coming from and I appreciate what you're doing with Article 1. However, what I see in terms of selling it to town meeting as a recodification, it could fall down because when you start moving a lot of things around, it's now unfamiliar. It's very hard to say, well, this section is really part of Section 1.6 and part of 2.3, and we combined it, turned it around and added a few things. And, and, but it's really the same.
But that's the housekeeping mess of our bylaw.
But you don't necessarily have to do that. And so that's, that's why, if, you know, if you start from scratch and sort of go through it line by line and then highlight, hey, what's the problem, where are the problem areas? All right, now how can we address them in the most simple way that is going to, again, you want to inspire confidence that you're not pulling the wool over anywhere, and not that you are, but that people begin to think, oh, what's hidden in there that I'm not seeing? And how, you know? So that's the only way, that's the only reason I would suggest that we don't start with an already drafted version and go forward, but start with the bylaw and taking into account the changes that have been suggested by the committee, seeing, can we put this in, but pretty much keep things familiar to people?
Well, that's why, that's why the text hasn't.
Do you recommend bringing it back the way it was presented last year? I mean, just.
I wasn't involved last year.
No, no, I'm not saying that, but it was clear succinct. It just didn't go. Without changing your structure, what you put together last year to present the town meeting, instead, I agree with you saying you should start mixing it around and shaking it up a bit.
Well, let me just make one point about the approach to this too. One of the other reasons for a two-step approach is if we can't get a housekeeping and reorganization done, forget about the rest of it. So let's do that step first.
I wouldn't necessarily say that's.
Well, no, I know, but I, but it's a consideration. And the, and the other part of it, although moving things around and saying all administration should be in one article, which is the approach of Article 1, I purposely did not change a lot of text. The only change was to add a new provision and clarify enforcement, which was a problem for us on a case last year. I purposely think for selling this to the town is to make as minimal number of changes to our existing text as possible, where possible. There are some places where it is a mess and it needs to just be jumped. But that's part of my approach to that is to minimize actual textual changes, which I would totally be opposed to starting like, yeah, throw it all out and rewrite it completely.
I mean, you do need some textual changes.
No, no, no.
You don't.
I agree.
You do need some textual changes.
No, we do. And there are places where I tried to recognize.
But anyway, Corey's been over here and I think he has something to say. And Diane.
I mean, I've been thinking about this and I think how you phrase it is really a very clean way to understand. Have a policy board and then you have, really, it's mechanics, right? It, you know, you know, what does a car going to look like versus how do we just keep the engine running? Sorry, I'm in the automotive phase, so. Great, Chris does the old time is like, think about this, Corey. But anyway, so, but, and I just, I imagine us being in front of town meeting. And I'm very concerned, as I said before, about how this goes in town meeting. And if we ask you guys to come in at step three, it's very difficult for us to, for them to expect you to explain, well, why are we here? Without having, I'm looking at the auditing, the diagnosis. If there are questions that come up, I think it's a stronger position if we have the work product, we have the procedures that you guys went through, because you've done this, to point to. And it's not at all about the context or the quality of the work. It's not about that at all. It is purely about how this is perceived and the process and how we got there. And I think it's, it's, it, one, it's a little bit unfair to ask somebody to, to kind of endorse something that they didn't make. I think it puts us as politically elected leaders in this kind of weird thing where we're trying to explain why we're here and that never kind of works well. So for me, if we're, if I'm looking at this and I'm trying to project how this is going to go when it comes to the reorg, not the policy stuff, and just bifurcating it, just understanding the reorg, I think we need to start from phase one. Because otherwise, I just, I think it's going to go sideways. So, and I think how you phrase it is, is that clarified a lot of what was in my mind.
My only point about that, if I may, is that nobody's saying they wouldn't be speaking at town meetings, supporting this at town meeting, explaining it, justifying it, because the town does need to hear from somebody outside Lauren, and I discussed this at length. But the initiative and the explanations have to originate with us. We are the policymakers and we are the ones driving this. We are the ones elected to do, to do these jobs. So I, I mean, it might be a slight distinction that I'm making here, but the, but the town officials have to be in the lead role always throughout this process.
So could I just tweet, because I don't disagree, but I wonder if the leadership is maybe a different character. Our leadership is saying, this is a problem. We need to address it. We have brought in phenomenal representation to help us through it. Where our role is to say, we've identified the problem and we're going to attack it. Not necessarily get into the weeds of defending necessarily how we got there. And again, if questions come up about phase one and phase two, you know, why was this diagnosis such? We need to have those answers and they need to be made public and they need to be made, you know, procedurally. So that's kind of where I.
Very good, okay. Diane?
Agreed. I mean, I think you articulated it, Judge Cutler, very well. And it, you know, I propose that we, you know, accept the scope of work from KP Law and start this process. I wonder if the, if we can get to a point where we're recodifying by the fall town meeting, which is December, whether it's a little further out. I do have concerns, like with last year, where, you know, developers put their applications in before and that, that's definitely a concern. But that's on the political policy side. And I think, I wonder also whether Jean, what Jean said is what every, you know, her laundry list is pretty much, if you took anybody, whether they know anything or they don't know anything about planning or the town bylaws or anything, those, that's exactly what you would hear from the community. And maybe we start having those public conversations. You know, if you're doing phase one, phase two, we're starting to take these big issues and just dumbing it down. We're not adding zoning or, you know, bylaw language to it. We're just saying, here's something we keep hearing about. Here's something that was a challenge with ZBA. We're going to have these public conversations and address these and then write the bylaws, you know, through, through council. And so that's sort of how I see it. And I think it's, it's doable. Again.
Do you mean like focus, focus groups on topics?
Focus group that's on everybody.
Can I just give you just a town history process piece that I think ties perfectly into this? The town did a full reorg of our bylaws a few years ago, right? And this is exactly what we're talking about doing. It was, we recodified the entire thing and it made electronics. People can actually search it. It was just a federal copy piece of paper. So, and the zoning bylaws were in there. We didn't touch those at all. We didn't do anything with them. So the town's already done that. And it was monstrous. It was monstrous. And town meeting had to accept this monstrous thing. But what they knew going in was we were just fixing. And there were inconsistencies, Jack, that you pointed out. There were some fines that then connected. They were citing old state law that didn't exist anymore. So council.
Extra commas and things.
Exactly. So it all got cleaned up. And that made possible the change that it had since. And it kept it clean. And so that you can all, if this is analogized to that, the town did it and adopted it unanimously, by the way. And Carol, the clerk, was just out of her mind at how complicated it was. So you're doing the same thing and then you're also running the parallel, you know, in depth. So there's a, there's a good history of town meeting being presented with something like that cleanly. And saying, hey, we're still going to do meaty stuff.
Now, I think everybody understands that it was very clearly articulated. Paul, you had a.
No, I was just impressed. I just think that's an ideal situation. You take the project that they did, Tom, I know you guys are working your tails off, is taking those laws that are already on the books and doing what you're doing is rewriting them and presenting it when the time comes, simplifying it and presenting it to the town. In a way, I mean, we all know that the overarching theme of this town is the town's being overbuilt. That's what I hear. I think a number of people would agree with me. Restart carrying capacity, for the most part. So the laws you presented, changes, ideal. And it's just, again, I think it's a presentation, the simplicity. I really do. I think if you keep it simple, you know, the old saying, keep it simple, stupid. You get it out there, let people agree, or other changes. Again, people put the horses on the barn. It's out. We are going to get the applications. We are, people put, it's already happened. It happened during the last meeting. Every started applying, bam. How many times did the planning board get hit? It's done. But at least, you know, we can put out the fire before it spreads. To a degree. And that's, I think if we keep it simple, that are complicating, you know, heavy-duty pages, lots of literature, and take the laws like Chris was saying that were redone and write them the way gifted and doing, and then present them to the town, I think we can simplify the process to a degree.
Yeah. Jane?
So the one thing on my list was not a reorg. And a part of that is because intuitively, I know we need to do it, but it's almost afterthought a little bit. But it is foundational and important to all the policy things that we want to do, right, in terms of from a drafting and a consistency standpoint. And so I think after listening to all of this, I would be a fan of having KP work sort of in the background on the diagnostic, the audit, the reorg, while we, the elected officials, really focus on the hard policy issues, including spending time trying to air out, including from the start, you know, do we have a real height issue? Can we address it by looking at the peaks, by looking at base elevation? Is that sufficient? Do we need to address the 35-foot issue? Should we move down to 30? You know, really trying to press on that, including with communications and outreach, because that's our true value add, I think, at the end of the day. And I think this will go faster and we might actually be able to get it all done by spring if we can have KP do that work in the background. And I don't want to say save ourselves, but, you know, being mindful of the limited time we all have, really try to focus our efforts on what's the end game? And trying to drive towards the end game on all these different policies.
The policies, the goals.
Yeah, I think it's very clear explanation of the two different aspects of the, of the legal puzzle, if you will. One is the procedural, which is a mess. And that's where we really need it. The other is the political. And I don't think, I think I agree with Jean. I don't see why those paths cannot move simultaneously. And I think we may, in our wisdom, authorize kind of a dual track because it's very, very clear. And that's where we ran into the problem before. We just weren't unable to do that. It's unfair to expect Tom to do that. But there are some political things which we, as Corey alluded to, we are elected political leaders. I don't have to face the voters for three years, so I'll do what I want. Did somebody write that down?
Put that in the minutes.
Well, thank you, Tom. You always were a good friend. But I think that, I think that makes sense. Is that feasible from the legal perspective, Judge Cutler?
Yeah, that is feasible. I would want to say, and Tom said something interesting before, which was, this really, this bylaw really has to come from the, you know, from the residents. And that is, and that is, goes without saying. I think you still need, even if KP does the initial drafting, you still need to go through with the committee to say, okay, or even before the drafting, when we do the diagnostic, this is what we saw. And that's when we do the diagnostic, we're finding questions as well. Gee, there's, I'm not quite sure what the town means with this provision.
Oh, that's fine.
What's intended here? And sort of getting the committee to focus on that so that we can make sure that the language matches what everybody thinks.
I have no problem signing doubling their work, by the way.
Let me get to the work schedule because for the ZBC now, you know, I created this ambitious schedule and still don't have a full committee. I'll keep reminding you. And so what do we do with that now? So one of the things, like, tentatively, there's, you know, the mile-high overview of this whole process as a public forum in this room in two weeks. I would suggest putting that off. I would suggest that we perhaps schedule more public forums through the fall and maybe make them focus groups on some of the substantive issues teeing them up for the spring. And we can pick, we can pick two or three of that.
Question on that too, that like sometimes also works well? And maybe it won't work because it's buying the public in. No, I don't mean it that way. If you have this public forum, but maybe you also address things topically? If that's possible. I know that, you know, like, we're going to discuss parking in general. That's one thing, or height in general. That's going to affect every district in town. But if it's going to be, all right, tonight, we really want to focus on the harbor. Because what tends to happen at some of the public forums, anyone who's available on that, you know, given Tuesday evening shows up and you're on parking, you're on frontage, you're on this, you're on commercial development, you're, you're all over the place. Two weeks later, you come back and you feel like it's Groundhog Day, but just with, with a different set of issues that sometimes that helps kind of like guide folks.
That can be done because, for example, we have discussed two, two very specific things on the harbor. Getting the polyglot of different zoning districts we have down there and consolidating them, number one. And number two, height. Because.
And number two?
The height in harbor structures, because the harbor overlay district didn't address it. We now know what the result is going to be. Not that anybody's proposing to tear down and have to go up that high at this point, but we should be prepared for that for the future. That's an easily isolated topic. The village is an easily isolated topic. Not so much parking. The zoning isn't going to necessarily affect that. That's more where can we put it? Not so much. I mean, right now, the only thing that the village does that's different than the rest of town, it doesn't require developments to have specific parking onsite. But there's other things like this fringe zoning that's a relatively new topic. And we can talk about that. And if anybody thinks there's anything else about the village bylaw, including height that could be addressed, or our FIR limits, which I will tell you, the working group didn't think, we thought the bylaw is fine. It hasn't been used until recently.
Tom, could I?
So no, let me, I'm just trying to think of the timeline and how we're going to deal with this. But anyway, we could do that. All right, so now the timeline. Are we going to go forward with something in the fall and just reorganization? And if you want to retool what's written, knock yourselves out. But we have a timeline to do that. The committee needs to meet to discuss it. We need to schedule the planning board hearings. We have to have text ready.
Well, I do, what I wanted to.
Something. And then, and then, you know, then we can work toward it. If spring town meeting is going to be made, which is exciting, that yields a different timeline that we have to work on on all those substantive issues. Schedule public forums and schedule bylaws accordingly. And you and I, you and the committee, deal with the articles that are needed as they come up and.
Tom, I do, I don't, really what I want to do is, they're not going to do anything until we vote on how we're going to pay them.
Yes.
Because they're sitting there, they're going, you know, these people haven't even bought us a cup of coffee.
Diane's about to jump out of her seat.
Yeah.
No, I just, I want to wrap it up by saying, like, the fact that the zoning bylaw working group and the master plan has, have done so much work, and Tom, you've done so much work, and Lauren and her team has done so much work. I think it's going to actually make these public forums go very well. We know what the big topics are. There's already language that Tom's drafted for some of them. So we have a framework for discussion. And I do think we should also talk about the committee discussing how these meetings should be facilitated.
And after, and we have to figure out how to pay them. But you know what?
I have to make a motion that we accept their proposal.
No, we're going to, we're going to discuss that, but we're going to put you in charge of all the public reach, outreach roles.
Sure. I'm a communications professional.
Was that a motion or could?
No, she's.
Did you motion?
Well.
We're.
Can we just check with KP? Real quick on, in the scope of work before we do any motions on it, I think what Tom was getting at is, is it realistic for you all? Because I'm looking at the zoning drafts in Phase 3 Because I'm looking at the zoning drafts in Phase Three for your target completion date, that if we have town meeting, I believe it's December 13th-ish?
Early September.
Yeah. And we have to work backwards, right? Because we have to do the planning board and all of that.
Right.
Is that a reasonable timeline, including to give all of us time to look and take what you're doing and do some back and forth on that? For the reorg?
If we, if we get right on the audit, so that we can get, audit is going to be a general audit, identifying, highlighting things that questions on or we want to check with, probably even with the town planner, meeting the committee, and meeting with the building inspector primarily.
This is a month old scope of work, so I just want to confirm.
So I think we would have to target it as being, you know, right after Labor Day, we're done with that. Give the committee some time to respond back. And in the meantime, be drafting up the more significant diagnostic report, which then we take in the committee's responses, fill that in. That's going to be the more dense report. And if we shoot, unfortunately, I've got a three-week European vacation that has been planned.
I'm so sorry. Diane will go when you're sad.
I was going to say, so maybe we could target
I do not have a three-weeks upcoming.
Right. We can maybe target the diagnostic report, depending upon when the committee gets back to us on the audit.
What we need to move
After that.
I'm sorry. What we need to move along is we need a proposal for funding to do the audit, so we can get this properly done and get to work, because I think time is important.
Well, I think we have the funding. So I think where Diane was going is that we just need to confirm that the AP scope of work that's dated July 12, 2022, the select board wants to approve.
Do you want to do Phase One and Two to start? Or because the zoning draft, it's a much looser proposal, because we didn't know just how many changes you wanted to include in that. But if we're strictly going with the recodification, maybe some recommended additions, like definitions, as you mentioned.
I don't want, again, I, maybe it's my pride speaking, but don't reinvent the wheel either. But text for the Fall Town Meeting has to be in place by September, end of September.
Oh, you do have cover.
And then Planning Board, Chapter Five hearings are scheduled for October.
I don't think we can, I don't
No, I don't. I think we've come to the conclusion that we're not going to make the Fall Town Meeting.
I don't think we came to that conclusion at all up until two seconds ago. But again, it depends on how much reinventing the wheel we're doing, which I'm sitting here alone trying to resist. But because the committee has worked hard on this for two years.
But Tom, I have to tell you, if town council does a review of what you've done and comment, and you go back and forth, it's also going to, you're not going to be done by
I, well, I expect your review, of course.
I agree. You know, it's not to have it done thoroughly.
Well, then it'll, then you're looking at a one-step process, which is fine by me as well. It's just the town meeting, we'll have to, the Springtown meeting will have to set designated nights for this, separate from the rest of the warrant. And the town, you know, we're going to have to do our communication to prepare for the town, dealing with 20-plus articles to accomplish the whole thing. And I think we certainly think the town has the capacity to do that, but it's going to just take work and preparation to make
I mean, you can also prioritize. I mean, I think, looking at your master plan, some of the things are within one to three years. Some of the things are a little bit, so if it's not all done, it's
No, I get it. And if it was done Fall, Spring '23 and Fall '23, I wouldn't, but I don't believe in stretching out, rewriting the bylaw into a two, three, four-year process. Not at all. And it's already two years and
Are we comfortable with
No, I just wanted to ask Jane if that was a motion? And do you want to extend it to Phase One and Phase Two?
I would actually like all four phases, because I think this is going to be continual work we're doing throughout 2022 and 2023. And I think that, you know, we're already a month behind, which is having some dramatic effects. So let's just not be behind anymore.
Would you be minimal to just, I mean, I was just looking at the hours here and the scope of cost, and you've got, and you were correct in that the Phase Three is really the, you know, it's got huge wide range, but just like a budgetary check-in at Phase Two? So we can say, how much are we spending? How much, are we okay with that?
Yeah, I think that makes a lot of sense.
We're just saying. Tom's good work. Is that a motion? Because I'll second it.
Yes. With a check-in at the end of Phase Two.
Okay. All right, we have a motion on the floor for the Select Board to approve the plan with a budgetary check-in at what
To approve the July 12, 2022 scope of work for the zoning bylaw revision project from KP, check-in at the end of Phase Two to provide guidance on Phase Three and Four.
Do we have a motion that's made and seconded?
Seconded.
Do we have any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, I call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
I'll make the same motion for the zoning bylaw committee, second.
I'll second it. Do we have a
Yeah, there's at least three of us. I don't know, is David, is David on the
He is.
Yes, all right, so
Talking is permitted if he's
All right, so the same motion by the zoning bylaw committee that was just made by the Select Board, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. David, are you aye? Nay?
Aye.
Thank you, David.
Thank you. Okay.
The question for Lauren, you have enough, you have what you need from us today? And yes, yes.
My questions have been answered, and I will rework this little schedule color-coded that I did for today with KP Law and Tom.
And the earlier points that we were making, you know, as a Select Board, and certainly Planning Board as well, like, we have to be behind this, and we have to keep us all honest. Tom, you need to keep us all honest on putting forth these bigger discussions to the community.
That was one of the bullet points, that was one of our bullet points I didn't mention, you know, and one of the lessons of December was, you know, the details, you know, we may disagree on details as each proposal comes up, but once we're behind a little bit, everybody's got to get up at town meeting and speak in favor of this with knowledge and be able to defend this. It can't just be this committee or another committee, so.
Jane?
No, you're on the last one.
Communications plan. Okay, so you kind of started, you know, into it. We are going to need to implement this, a communications plan. And that's going to require that we know what is being proposed a series of meetings. We'll, you know, make sure that Justin understands, and he's done a very good job. Do you think we should have a section on the town website on this? I'm just throwing it out for discussion.
So you know what's out there right now, is what is posted there right now is the new table of contents, the table of contents for the new consolidated regulations and the first four zoning articles, and the new table of uses. That can change. And if you guys say pull those things down until you look through them, whatever. But as far as communication, we're changing the scope of the forums to more immediate focus groups. So I would suggest, if you don't mind, just brainstorming how to organize those and throw out some ideas.
Chris?
May I ask that maybe there's an working group working with Lauren, come up with some concepts and we can work back to my office? Then we can let you all know that, whether it's facilitate a conversation, maybe some days for live presentations, getting as many people, you know, you want all, the input from all of you, too, so that we'll come up with something and bounce on the follow-up, so you know the plan for the fall.
But yeah, no, and I would just suggest that when we do public focus, that they're now like a focus group, that we please try to do it in this way, where it's live Zoom and TV simultaneously. I've got to get away
They're coming. Absolutely. Anyway, comments from the Select Board?
Any of the synopses, I mean, I saw you have posted, but, you know, people, I think, just want to layman's terms, just lay it out. Very brief, quick, benefits, cons, pros, and layman's terms. And I'm not saying you don't.
No, I can't, no, I know. I mean, this is both a complicated topic and it has to be explained simply, so
There's a warrant article format that we always use, which
We're trying to go
Language, the deep
Clark, we're trying to talk, and Jane had her hand up, and we'll get around to it.
I was just bouncing off of what Paul was asking.
Can I make a suggestion? Following from what you guys were both talking about, you, for the audience, Paul and Clark, it might make sense for us to continue this conversation at another meeting where, and maybe you zoning committee think about it, and we ask Justin to help you brainstorm, too, where I could see, for example, we try to handle this in sort of a bite-sized way. And Tom, I think you were alluding to it in terms of how we know residents think about the different zoning issues. You know, for example, we do one communications outbound plan for village harbor house size, house height, mitigation, frontage. And I think for each discrete topic, we could start off with like some tweets. Post on 143, you do an in-person, you do a survey. And then after you do some of the plain language out there in terms of, you know, our house is too tall, and Cohasset, what's the real problem here? You know, again, plain language to get the build and thinking. Then the next step in the communications outreach is, okay, here's what we're hearing. Here's a proposed bylaw that tries to get at this feedback. What do you, you know, and again, try to respond to that plain language and then show the result of that through a more formal, you know, here's what the change would be in the applicable section. So that way, people can start to put together, because, you know, we have a lot of people who care about this stuff, but it's a pretty dry topic, too. And so trying to
And you know that soliciting comments on 143 in response to both the village and the blasting stuff that's going on has generated zero suggestions, at least that I've received. When everybody complains the bylaw stinks and the bylaw's not doing this or doing that, what do you suggest? Zero.
But, you know, there could be some balance. I think that the, here's the bylaw that's going to address this is January on, right? So maybe it's a question of one of these, we've got to be really careful with questions, because they can be very leading and you get the, you know.
Well, I don't think we want to, to your point, we don't want to facilitate an unprotected
Right.
Discussion where people are
That we grab them and then say, hey, by the way, next week in Wilka Commons, we're going to be talking about, you know, building height in the harbor. Or however that lays out, right? Tease them through social channels.
Can I just ask where this is going to come from? So this is all great, right? But we need to know what topics we're talking about and where we're getting the direction. Because I don't, we can't get it from five different places. We need to know what the topic list is, what are the top topics? And then we can form a plan.
But Tom has some, we talked about it with Jack last night. Jack said we should generate a shortlist. And, you know, we've talked about the planning board and see if they have a shortlist. We should reach out to the ZBA and advisory and just get an info dump and then start going through it.
I kind of have a sense of what the issues would be. And I think we just agreed that Lauren and I would throw out some suggestions for what these focused forums would be.
You're so lucky, Lauren, you got another job, right? You know, say longer, and who knows what'll happen.
Tom, I do like, though, how Jane phrased it, though, you know, getting it out there, and maybe this with Justin comes into play, is, you know, hey, the house is too tall. Hey, Cohasset, the road's too wide. Or, hey, Cohasset, are you happy that we're not building on ledge? You know, again, like you said, zero response. But it's all, I think it's all in presentation.
One of the other things about when I answered questions on 143 about those two topics was, you know, I can't do anything since they're before the planning board to make substantive decisions. But I'm trying to give people reality checks, because people will throw out, well, the bylaw stinks and it's not doing this. We should stop development, you know. And I try to give people reality checks. And really, on all of these topics we're talking about, there's only a limited range of choices that we had. And I think, you know, thinking about this in my head, I'd be at these forums saying, open to new ideas, but really, here are the choices with this particular issue, what you do with it. And what do you think? And which way would you like to go? And if you go this way, this was what might result. And if you go that way, this is what
Fully dovetail into presentation.
I think one of the things, I'm sorry.
No, Diane was
Diane?
No, I was just going to say, I mean, this is what we've been talking about with respect to communications, is that, I mean, 143 is not like an official town thing. So there's a lot of people that don't weigh in and step back, and there's people that weigh in. It's a Facebook, you know, town thing. It identifies a lot of good issues. But, you know, I think if the town is strategically pushing out, you know, through their social channels or through the website or whatever it is, we're going to get a different quality of response back. And if it's immediately followed up with an invitation, you know, to, that's the topic we're going to be discussing next Wednesday night at Wilka Commons at 7:00 PM, I think we're going to see a little bit of a different engagement. We're going to have to rein our friends and neighbors in, you know, for sure, but
I also
It won't help if nobody's
I also think that anchor, Cohasset anchor, is very interested. And I think that they could do something very similar to what the Mariner used to do, which is kind of a point-counterpoint. And the advantage of Cohasset anchor is it's curated. So they're going to make it a more responsible, journalistic
Right.
Thing. And I think that's a very important thing. 143 is just throwing, you know, scorches back and forth, and it's lots of fun and all that. But, but, yeah, go ahead, Jane.
But we also have the list of people who go to town, neither. It's not an unknown group. You know, we could do direct mail, too, in terms of keeping people updated. If we wanted to do outbound communications, Chris, I see
No, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to understand the process, right?
Yeah, so I think the process might be zoning committee reaches out with a list of policy questions that are grouped in a way to invite public feedback. And I think, you know, Tom and Clark and the other members think about it. I like the idea of inviting feedback from planning board, ZBA on these policy questions, Select Board, so we all know what's going on. And then, then we ask, we have this list, and then we ask the town, Justin, you guys, for help on, okay, now let's put together an outreach plan for each of these policy questions designed to educate, get feedback, see how people are feeling in this first phase. And then I think to Diane's point, you know, we get people activated. And then when we start to do pen to paper, including taking into account the feedback we're getting, maybe some of the feedback is, don't do anything. And so we make a decision about what we want to do. And then the second phase is engaging more on the substance, maybe in a similar fashion.
What's the timeline? What do you think?
Who drives that? Who drives that is the big question. Do you really think that you're, with all you're having to do, are going to be able to drive that?
One of the reasons I'm doing it is I have a lot of the free time. I'm not raising children anymore, I'm not walking dogs.
Okay, that's
We can drive it, but we need help. We're going to need consultants to do some technical stuff in addition to what KP Law does.
I would, you know, for example, for this first one, Lauren and I thought that we were going to share the presentation duties of that. I would expect
Got a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Question on
But KP, I expect to be at these forums, one of you, to help answer any really specific questions. Diane's facilitation, present these things that you like.
No, I, we'll all help.
We have a priority. We have a Zoom question from Bob Jeffers.
Rob Jeffers.
Rob. 18 Spring Street. I think the board needs to take in consideration only 3% of the town comes to the town meeting. While people are vocal in places like Facebook 143, many of them do not come to town meeting. While the Select Board should look to represent the entire town, I think you need to focus on people who will actually vote to get those ideas passed. Reaching out to people who have come to the meeting consistently might make sense.
I think that's what Jane was saying.
Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
That's a G, exactly.
And Jane is going to
We have a list, so we
Boy, this is really exciting here.
I agree with Rob.
Are you asking to come back to the Select Board at the end of August, beginning of September with your
I agree.
And then you'll bless it, and then we'll go, set a plan. They'll come up with a list, they'll come back to the Select Board late August or September.
Well, I, you know, August was never ideal, so I would anticipate we'd start forums in September. And then if we're completely junking anything for the fall, that frees up more time for us to go through October, November with more forums because for the spring, we have to be ready with articles by end of January. So we have to look at that timeline.
And Jack, I think, Chris, on your end, I think if, if we can get a plan and a schedule down, then we can take the House of Town meeting voters, for example, and do mailings for, hey, here's a schedule coming out for all of these forums coming up. You should attend because we know you attend town meeting. We, you know, like, we, we can then do a lot more outbound outreach.
What, what are we thinking about that in parallel right now?
Yeah, what I would suggest, Chris, is that you take the ideas here and put together an action plan for us to take a look at. We can do that. Go ahead, Diane, but I am looking at nine o'clock. I'm going to set a record for a two-hour meeting.
I'm not going to do it yet, but just really quickly, one, I mean, we did have good crowds for the master plan. I mean, we typically had 30, 50, depending on the topics, you know, and workstations and everything. So whatever we did that at that point to socialize those, those dates and times, you know, see, see what we did, I don't remember, but we did get decent feedback.
And we had focused, focused areas for the topics for the, for the master plan.
Okay.
It's a multiple phase.
Right, so Chris, you're, you're going to take these ideas, put them into an action plan and, and we'll have that for
We'll have that, we'll have that in conjunction with the, with the list of topics.
And that will be
Whatever you come back.
I'm writing it, I'm writing it. No, I'm writing
Panic when you
No, it won't be finalized till the end of August, but you will have ideas thrown out quickly because I'm writing
All right, so we will have
You don't need them tonight, Tom.
We'll have by the end of August.
23rd, is that the, I think that's the Select Board, the last one, August. So we'll, we'll figure out, we'll look for the
All right, so Chris will have an action plan based upon our suggestions the end of August. All right, I think that we've had a very productive meeting. I want to thank everybody for showing up. I also like to thank everybody, we are a contentious lot. And I think that we have been remarkably well behaved so we can go home and take out our aggressions at home where they belong. Oh, I'm in trouble again? All right.
With that, great closing, I motion to adjourn.
Yeah. Sure, that was awful fast. All right, we have a motion made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Motion to adjourn for the zoning bylaw committee.
I will second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, Jack?
Aye.
David, I heard an aye from you. Thank you for
Thank you for having this meeting in person. Even though I was all set up in my little